2014 Meeting of the Litchfield School Board. We are starting a couple of minutes late for those watching at home, I apologize. I'd like to call us to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any revisions? None. Summary of non-public actions from June 25th, 2014. Mr. York made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of June 4th, 2014 as written. Mr. Barka seconded, the motion carried 5-0-0. Mr. York made a motion to accept the nomination of Steve Frazier as LMS Lit Tech Teacher. Tongue twister. At a salary of $36,517 for the 2014-15 year. Mrs. Lapore seconded, the motion carried 5-0-0. Mr. York made a motion to accept the nomination of Holly Messenger as the HR Director at a salary of $54,841 for the 2014-15 year. Mr. Barka seconded, the motion carried 5-0-0. Mr. Bork made a motion to accept the nomination of Martha Thayer as LMS Assistant Principal at a salary of $75,000 for the 2014-15 year. Mrs. Lapore seconded, the motion carried 5-0-0. Mr. York made a motion to accept the resignation of Ed Lettich, LMS Special Education Teacher. Mr. Barka seconded, the motion carried 5-0-0. Which carries us to correspondence, if anybody has any. I don't think I had any. No, I do not. Anyone else? So we'll go to draft minutes on the 25th?
Well, no, go ahead.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay. You have something you want to?
The minutes are accurate. I just erred in a statement that I made, I wanted to let the board know.
You can correct it if you want.
If the minutes reflect his statement, then...
The minutes accurately reflect an inaccurate statement on my part.
Oh, well, correct it.
Nice job, Michelle. You couldn't read his mind?
I was sick last night.
I said that we had passed the BYOD policy.
Yep.
When I was responding to Mr. Burke. And in fact, we've not, we're still working on it. So it has not come to the board for look at.
Okay.
I erred and I apologize for that.
Oh, so why don't we just change this to a different word?
No, it's an accurate statement. I said we passed the policy.
The minutes this time will reflect that.
That you undid your statement from last time.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post abstain? Thank you. Community forum. Perhaps people are yelling at the TV at home, but there's nobody here to speak to us tonight. Which doesn't surprise me in July. Which takes us up to superintendent comments.
Just to let the board know that Holly Messenger starts tomorrow, first day. She'll have two days overlap with Tracy McCallie, who leaves to start her new position at SNHU. I think it's a week from next Monday. Barbara, Mr. Markowitz and I have put together a transition package with some PD. It involves some time with Tracy, with Frank, with Barbara. And we're swapping some time with Pelham School District. We're doing some PD for one of their incoming people and they're swapping ours. And we'll have former HR Director Mahoney in doing some work. And I think we actually do well on the salary differential in the hour by hour, so we agreed to.
It's a positive cash flow.
She's buying lunch.
She's buying lunch.
You haven't told me that yet.
Nice. School Board member comments, if there are any. I don't expect it to be an issue, but I've heard various news reports that there are unaccompanied alien children that are being relocated to Western New Hampshire. Now, I don't know how far and fast they might spread, but I'm just assuming that we'll keep track of those that come into the district to make sure they really do belong in the district prior to September.
Relocated by whom? Is this related to the children coming up from?
The border, yes. So they're spreading them out, and I heard it on the way home, and they said that Western New Hampshire was a destination. I don't know if, what that meant. I haven't been able to find anything concrete.
Is the Merrimack River the dividing line of Western?
I don't know. We could be on the wrong side.
It could be Hillsborough County, and we'd be like, we need to be part of Rocket Ham now.
If it wasn't before, it is now.
Knowing it's probably the Connecticut that's the divider.
They're on the way to Vermont. They're on the way to Vermont.
So they had specifically said Western New Hampshire. I don't know if it's the Keene area or what it is, but... The stories that I've read is they get dropped off and they disperse, so I don't know what population, if any, might be here, but if we could keep track of that for the...
Do we have to solve a homeless problem with our these kids too, or are they...
I don't know. I don't know. Hopefully it's not an issue, but I guess I don't want to get caught by surprise like some districts are getting caught by surprise where they've got, you know, hundreds of kids that show up that suddenly need to be put in classrooms that weren't budgeted or planned for.
Kenny Vento is pretty descriptive in the things you have to do. And we have a Director of Homeless Education in relatively a new position in the state to act as a coordinating body as well.
Okay. That might be just to keep pinging such person and saying, what do you hear happening in the state? Principals' reports, which we don't have any principals with us tonight, but we do have the handbook for each of the schools with the proposed revisions that we were asked to comment or question on, so we could send those questions on, we could get corrections, and then approve at the meeting on the 23rd. I wanted to say 25th, but it's 23rd. I know, I forwarded my questions on to Michelle and the board, or my comments. I'm happy to review them if anybody has any questions about what I was poking at there. I think the most work was in the high school. Somebody I think needs to make sure all the policies that are referenced are correct and complete without a paraphrase. I found several that were paraphrased that... Whenever you have something said one way versus the policy that says it the other, I think you just open yourself up for some issues.
Yeah, one of the issues, and we've dealt with this before, is the student dress code issue. And the way they've handled it at GMS is they've referenced the policy in its entirety and then indicated that there are a couple of other little things that they do not approve. So under address, "In addition to the student dress code policy in this handbook, GMS has some additional expectations addressing elementary students," and these are for safety reasons. The items not allowed specifically GMS are roller shoes, the Heelys because for safety, and the silly bands for kids playing on the playground. So it's not really a dress code thing. There are pieces of attire that they're not allowed for safety reasons, and those are specific statements to the elementary school.
Okay.
So in conversation with how we would address that, administration and I thought that that would be a decent way of doing it. I mean technically, it's more a safety issue than it is a dress code issue, but when parents start buying clothes and shoes for school, then they typically look at this area. So if the board has a better way to address...
We could add it to the policy. I mean that's, I don't see any reason that the policy as it stands has to be tailored toward Campbell, which, or Campbell and LMS. If there's issues at any of the schools, you know, somebody somewhere is going to show up with Heelys at Campbell, because you also, you laugh.
And silly bands. So on the transportation, they've added a line in there, "Students should be at their bus stop five minutes prior to the scheduled pickup." And I see no issue with that. I would probably say that my daughter's bus stop was late by five minutes, 50% of the time this year. So if one is going to occur, then the buses need to run a little better on time. And this isn't because of snow or whatever the processes are, it's just they weren't running on time.
I question that one so well.
I mean...
If I get there a minute before or five minutes before, what do you think my kids say? I don't know.
Yeah. How do they know that they're a minute there or five minutes, as long as...
There were those five minutes as it is.
There were times that, you know, the kids were there, the parents pulled up and the kids were running, so I do understand that that's probably what they're trying to... And if five minutes earlier, the bus had been on time, you know, two or three of these kids would have been in line.
So would it be better to make a statement that said, you know, something to the effect of, "The bus schedule is inexact, and parents should expect the bus plus or minus five minutes from the scheduled time?"
That would be a better comment than how it's written today. Yes.
You know, "Bus times shown are approximate, parents should plan for five minutes either..."
Five minutes either side. Because I believe that's forward. I mean there were very few times that they ran early, and you ended up going to the GMS to drop off your kid, but...
Where were you in the grand scheme of the bus?
We were at Moose Hollow and...
Were you early or late in the round?
No, we were right in the middle. They had, you know, so they probably had, you know, once they picked up Kylie, they probably had six or seven more stops, just driving back towards GMS on Pinecrest, I believe.
So the issue is, if anybody in the first stops is late, if they're waiting for someone that's running to the bus, that's how...
Oh, that, yeah.
Because we were the, when my daughter was going to GMS and LMS, we were the last stop before it went to the school.
I'll see you in 10 minutes.
You know, getting picked up at 7:05 is more like getting picked up at 7:12 or 7:15 most days, independent of the weather. Conversely, on the way home, right on the dock, because she, first they run the route in reverse on her way home. So maybe that's just a better statement is, you know, the times are approximate and...
Times are approximate, you should give yourself plus or minus five minutes.
Because you don't want to show up at the bus stop time and stand there not knowing the bus has already gone. There's not like a little flag that comes out that says the bus was here and left.
In most case, at least, we're, you know, there's enough kids that you would know.
I have another question with the dress. The bottom comment is, "Students should be dressed for all changes in weather, during inclement weather, students should wear adequate clothing. Boots, mittens, gloves, jackets, ski pants, and hats are necessary on full-mother days." Are we saying they are required, you're not going to allow it? It's a little wishy-washy. And I know we don't enforce it, so, I mean, we should enforce it, but if we're going to enforce it, it should be...
So this isn't one of the changes, you're just in regular...
This is just, I noticed it, just because I know for a fact, kids show up without jackets and are put back inside.
You should come to the high school someday.
Wet hair, t-shirts.
They don't have recess.
Shorts.
20 below, yes.
Some of those fourth graders think it's cool to wear a jacket, and they'll show up without a jacket, and they're allowed to stay outside. So which one is it?
I guess you could, can we ask, is it okay to ask for a clarification, that what are the ramifications if you don't do that? You won't go out for recess, or your parents might be called to...
It's one of those things that says, "Should wear adequate clothing." Is it a shall, or is it, you know?
Good question.
We know how we like about shalls. We are now a shall-driven group.
We don't like wills.
I find it interesting, when I drive down Albuquerque on the way to school in the middle of winter, you get a lot of kids who are dressed appropriately for the weather getting out of nice warm cars and walking for about eight seconds.
Exactly.
And the one cool guy in the corner in shorts and a t-shirt has been there for 10 minutes.
Derek, what page is that?
Page eight.
Eight, and that's GMS, right?
GMS, yeah. Yeah, I think it's LMS and CHS. If they're stupid enough to not wear jackets, it's not a fault, but, you know, eight-year-olds.
Can I just ask something about the students whose clothing is questionable will be spoken to by the classroom teacher? In my first or second grade, is it maybe the parents should be spoken to?
Why are you dressed like that?
This is all my parents' hair.
What page is that on?
That's eight.
That's eight. That's right in the middle. That's fine, I just want to make my notations.
You know, and the other thing is, you know, my children have moved into LMS now, but, you know, there's no room for the kids to bring, you know, ski pants, boots, and stuff. There's no room at GMS for first and secondary graders. Well, there's no room for the first graders to bring it. Maybe there's room for the fourth graders because they have lockers, but for some of those classes, I mean, if you're late, there's no hooks or anything. I mean, it becomes a, you know, a major issue to try to get jackets and stuff all locked up, so... Maybe the question is to just see whether they're handling this, if this is what they want to be, so they have the flexibility to handle whatever the issues are, even though we know there are some issues with being able to store some of this stuff. Because I know my kids have taken snow pants to school. And they were out in the snow. Went in the snow and stuff, and they were...
I think my kids did.
In fact, well, it depends. Sometimes they want the kind of snow they bring, and otherwise they wouldn't bring.
In fact, I believe that they didn't have snow pants, they actually didn't let them go out playing in the snow.
Yeah.
I think is what it was, they didn't want to go playing in the snow.
But I remember going in and seeing that the kids had all their stuff. There were so many items of winter clothing hung on the little hooks on the side of the wall that you almost didn't have room to walk down the hallway. They were packed full.
Now, they have a great lost and found over there. Had to go find clothes many a day.
Anything else on GMS?
They will, I did read your comments about the testing. Will all the schools be adding that language that Dennis had talked about in his email?
I don't think they do Ames Web at the high school. Only at LMS and GMS. And LMS added a one-liner in the, under the testing, but there was nothing at GMS.
And we did, you saw issues with, I didn't see it, I couldn't find it, but going back and looking for it, where they were talking about the old lunch by meal time.
It was in LMS, yes.
Oh, is that in LMS, okay.
Yeah. They had a whole block that was highlighted by Michelle as the changes, and then it says, "Oh, we're proud to introduce this, starting May 13th, 2014."
Yeah, she just put the letter in there, and I sent the letter to her so she could wordsmith it.
Yeah, so that just needs to be, and then it says, "Oh, you can still contribute to meal time until whatever, 2013." I'm just saying, we need to clean up that language. And then they had a reference to Ames Web. But not, it doesn't describe what we do with the data, if we share it, how the parents look at it, any of that stuff.
I did bring copies of the CHS actual 13-14 student handbook, if anybody wants them.
Anything else on LMS that people saw? At CHS, I just, as I said, I noted the policies. We talk about policies being under review or being revised, and I guess I didn't know that we were doing those. Or we were expected to do those, so we need to either get the policy in, or, I mean, I don't even object to having a reference to the policy if they don't want to put the whole thing, and I know they kind of want to have the one-stop shop inside the book.
I think the issue is that because the student handbooks at all three schools serve the function of parental and student notice, they have to be officially there. And this was an attempt, because there was still some conversation last year about the dress code, and I think Principal Rothaus had questioned whether or not the board would be open to some revisions. And so the conversation was about putting out some sort of disclaimer that there may be some changes to this, in case some were made during the school year this year, and instead of being addressed that way. That was approved with sort of that agreement, that some language in there that would cover us in case changes were made. And the statement instead just said, "It's under review."
If a change is made, is it possible to do like a little supplementary page that can be inserted into the book?
I know they did that, if it wasn't last year, it was the year before, because there was a policy that, I think it was the athletic and co-curricular policy, got approved after the book went to print, and all they did was include it inside of each one of the books, a copy of that policy. So I think there's a precedent that's set there. The one thing that I don't, I guess, I read through FERPA, and it wasn't clear, but in Section 512, we require parent notes from students that are over 18.
No, you can't.
But that's what the handbook says, even students that have reached the age of 18 are required to have a parent note for dismissal or...
That's a violation of...
I, that's why I said, can we, what about FERPA? I understand under 18, and some kids may not care, but you may get a kid that turns 18 that...
Or any child that the court has granted them permission to be their own adult.
Yeah, so...
What are they called, emancipated minors?
I think so. Yeah, it was in...
I was looking to my left when I asked the question.
That is correct.
I think it's just, it was in Section 512 of the CHS. Which I think that's been there for a while, so...
So at LMS, I know here at CHS, if a student doesn't complete the required six credits, they're still required, they're still considered a freshman, even though they may be a sophomore or, if it's a sophomore, they may be a junior, or until they solve that problem. What happens at LMS? I know we have the promotion retention, but what happens at LMS when a student doesn't pass the five or six core subjects? I mean, you know, if they don't pass, you know, band, or woodworking, or PE, or something, I, you know, they just failed that. But what happens if somebody doesn't pass English, or reading, or science, or social studies, or math?
In the LMS email, page two of the handbook revisions, "Promotion. Students who earn passing grades in their current grade will be promoted. Students in grades five, six, and eight who fail through more than five major subjects will be required to attend summer school at their expense."
What page is that on, Brian? Is that part of the handbook?
No, it's the revisions from LMS.
Page 16, I think.
Promotion was one of the things that Michelle bookmarked.
And I printed off Policy IKE, Promotion and Retention of Students, and as I'm looking at it, it says, "The Superintendent and Building Principal shall establish minimum academic levels of performance in mathematics and language arts at all fourth grade students shall meter exceed." And then further detail, "Great advancement to grade five without credit for subjects to fail, attend summer school. All students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grades shall possess grade level reading and math skills and should have a passing grade in four core subjects, math, language arts, science, and social studies. Anyone who fails through more core subjects shall be required to attend and pass a summer program in the failed subject." So given the flexibility that's in the policy, and what's in the Policy IKER, the procedures, very similar to what's described, I think that addition is okay. It still is, the policy itself says there's discretion, and it just appears that they are taking some of the content from the procedures and codifying it in the notice appearance. At the bottom, "The students must pay off any remaining balances with the school. This school and district can only be eligible for the promotion ceremony." Policy JQ, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges, says, "The principal may withhold extracurricular eligibility and in-school privileges until financial obligation is fulfilled."
I think that's okay. I think that's what they're saying there is in line with...
Yeah, so as long as attending the promotion ceremony meets the criteria of in-school privileges or extracurricular eligibility. I know in the high school, we had this situation this year, and we talked about it at the middle school, and the high school doesn't, doesn't, they don't require them to miss graduation, but they can't participate in any other sort of activities. This one specifically says the promotion ceremony, and it's just not in conflict with the policy.
I actually would like to bring up, and my computer picked an inopportune time to update my software, but with regard to search and seizure policy, and I was just looking at the LMS policy, the procedure is that a student can be present when their locker is searched, but we're talking kids who are under the age of 15, say, 14. I don't know what the law is in New Hampshire, I'm not sure what the statutory or case law is in New Hampshire, I'm not a New Hampshire attorney, so I can only speak to what Massachusetts does in the case of a juvenile, particularly juveniles under the age of 14. You need to have an interested adult present and advising the child before a child can be required to, you know, be searched, or talk to the police, or waive any of their constitutional rights. I think it's something that we need to think about.
If it's, I know New Hampshire case law and law in our policy, I think align very well, and it's lockers, partly because the notification is given in the handbooks. Lockers and students' desks, students have no right to privacy, and they can be searched at the discretion of administration. Person is a totally different situation, but because of the disclaimers, the case law has held up in terms of searches of lockers and desks because they're school property, and the disclaimer in the policy and in the handbook indicates as such, you have no right or no expectation of privacy in those two because of that reason.
Okay. Now, that may be, however, if there is a situation where a child's locker is suspected of containing something that it should not, I still feel that a child's parent or interested adult should be contacted to be with that child if there's going to be a search of that locker, I'm just saying. And I think the same would go to a high school student as well. And again, generally in Massachusetts, the way it runs, even if a child is over the age of 14, if they do not have experience with the law, have never been in trouble before, have not experienced a search, have not had to execute or exercise their rights under the Constitution, that inexperience of a child over 14 is also taken into account, and they should have an interested adult to consult before they waive any rights.
Maybe you can just run that by Gordon, just to make sure our policy, which I think we consulted Gordon when we did the policy, but I know there was just, something was, I don't know if it passed at the State House, but it was dealing with student search and seizure. I remember reading it in the email summary that we get from Dean Mishner, from the School Boards Association, but I don't remember whether it passed or not. They were going to amend that law, and I think our policy just, it's one of those... And I think our policy just, it's one of those that the policy just restates what the law says so that we're in compliance, but that would be worthwhile checking.
I would suspect that it doesn't reference anything like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can check.
Uh, I want to do a go back on LMS as well. There's a section on skateboards on page twenty-eight that should say skateboards are not allowed on school property at any time. This references seven to four. There should be signs posted.
We're gonna need, uh, we're gonna need a stiffer, uh, I haven't, I haven't seen a lot at LMS, but I don't know how many times I've walked into our board meetings here.
I tell them every time.
And they're out there with their skateboards.
I tell them every time. You guys know how to read? Huh? Sign right there, no skateboards. Cool.
Yeah.
You know, and tell somebody, it's, it's one of those generational things, if you don't tell somebody to stop, they, they're not gonna do it.
Is that a insurance issue, liability issue?
The, the issue was from Primex, if you don't explicitly forbid it, you implicitly...
Allow it.
Allow it. And therefore, the district is liable. Somebody goes off the edge of a sidewalk and breaks an ankle or an arm or a wrist, they can come back and say, well, you didn't tell them they couldn't do it, so...
Edline. Wasn't LMS going to be going to the new system this year where that would be?
Fifteen, sixteen.
Okay.
And LMS needs a policy look too, because they have an old homework policy from two thousand and five that I know...
She assured me that she looked at those, but I'm gonna check them before it goes to print.
I remember this policy. Everyone, these two gentlemen should remember the homework debate policy.
Well, principals, I send them to the principals every time they're approved.
So I think we just need to do a complete scrub. And I'm not suggesting that it's you, Michelle, but...
That's, that's okay.
To come back and say, we're in compliance.
Yes, we had, we had homework issues this year at times. Got the blanks there.
There is a change, page eight of the CHS.
We're doing the CHS?
Yeah, Campbell High School Diploma. They've got math must include Algebra One and geometry, but they haven't noted that that begins with the class. I believe it's of two thousand and eighteen. So in the case of not having a bunch of this year's, upcoming year's seniors freak, we may want to...
I, I think we should stress them out a little bit, it's just their senior year.
Yeah, we can make a note that it's, starting with the class of two thousand and eighteen.
I think it, I think it, you know, it says you have to have Algebra One, geometry, and one other math class. What other math classes are there?
Statistics.
Oh, it's for the...
We don't, we don't count pre-algebra, do we?
Pre-algebra, we'll count as a math course.
And I, I, just because I looked at it at, at LMS, do you think maybe we should have the same school cancellation delay writing in all three handbooks?
Correct.
Because you can only not have school at, at CHS if you watch Channel Nine or listen to WZID. If you are at another school, you can watch four or five other channels that can inform you of that, plus four or five radio stations. So we should just sort of use the same. I think everybody uses the superintendent's five-thirty wake-up call for most of us.
Well, if, if you happen to have someone in the district, employee of the district, you get a wake-up call earlier than that, so you get to have multiple calls.
You get the four-thirty wake-up, four-thirty call.
It's usually about five, I think.
Cell phone, home phone. Yeah, exactly. It's great stuff.
Yeah, you, you learn in the winter to shut the ringer off downstairs.
I think at the high school, when the very first student gets theirs, it's pretty much Facebook after that and tweets.
Yeah, it could be. Go school!
Shouldn't the policy just say that no matter what happens, the superintendent's gonna be wrong? Your school cancellation.
I think that's just an assumption.
I'm confused about something with regard to grade point averages in the CHS.
What page?
Oh, 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 oh.
Page ten?
Uh, sorry. Ten. Um, maybe I'm just reading it wrong. Students earning the honors option or passing honors level and advanced placement courses will have an additional fifty percent calculated into the grade point average in, oh, okay. All right, sorry, I read it weird. AP classes have an additional one percent. So, um, okay, so students earning the honors option or passing honors level, shouldn't it be, students earning the honors option or passing honors level will have an additional point five calculated into the grade point average and AP classes have an additional one? That confuses me because it says, it says at one point AP will have a point five and then AP classes will have a point one.
I hadn't highlighted because I, my question was, so is it an additional beyond the regular or is it an additional beyond the honors? It doesn't, doesn't clarify. And quite honestly, I think it's easier with the chart that says, here's a GPA range for regular course, honors course, AP courses, and, you know, each grade equates to this number of, of points. It, it's a lot clearer.
And we had to add the word passing because I said, you realize if somebody takes the honors option and fails, they would get a point five added to their GPA and it would be zero point five for the course. And they're like, oh, that's right, we don't want to do that. And I said, you could take an AP, fail, and still get the same grade as a D, get a one point O.
So we'll recommend that be essentially a chart so that you can look at it once and see.
You say regular course, AP course, or honors, honors option and then AP.
Actually, I think that'd be really helpful for kids to see.
It's at the bottom of page twelve as well.
And the AP scores came out today. They were available.
I didn't get my update yet.
Oh, my daughter called me because she, you can go online and look. They didn't, they haven't mailed them out or anything, you can go online and look. So do we want to approve them with the changes today so as soon as they make the changes and get reviewed, they can go to the printer? Which might remove a little stress for the principals once they...
Well, given that they were probably supposed to be at the printers last week, I think that would be helpful.
John, you got a bit on this some year.
Well, maybe not, because if it takes them two months to get it printed, actually, actually, the, the, uh, the one at, at GMS and some of them I can see because they have, you know, they're part of their book, you know, their day timer type thing and stuff like that. But I don't believe that here, I think it's just a coil-bound book, so the easiest one to do is here. That one, that, that's a, that's ten days in production and it's ready to go. The AGS is the one that should be the quickest turnaround. The other ones have all the other...
Yeah, they gotta put all the other content in.
All the other content and stuff in, but they probably are working on that, the company that does that is probably working on that and has it...
They probably pick like a template. So we want to make a motion, we can do them individually or just as one shot to approve them as amended?
Make a motion to approve them as amended.
Any other discussion or issues or concerns?
The only thing that I ask is that, um, a final copy, printed copy, is given to the board's members to thumb through and review and then give back to the schools to have as their extras. But we should be able to go through and see a printed final just to make sure that, no, afterwards, I mean, they should go, if we find an error, they can fix it.
Maybe at the meeting in August.
But, but they ought to have copies for us to take home and peruse real quickly and bring back at the next meeting and say, okay, these are, these are...
Because they always order ten extra.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, we shouldn't keep them, but we ought to be able to, to So that some other student doesn't come home and need a new, new wardrobe.
Are you thinking you might be buying new clothes this year, John?
No, I'm not buying that. I've spent enough. She had to get her glasses today, that was a, that was comical. All right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Stay. Thank you. I don't think we have anything new on the Diploma of Distinction from CHS. I know they were gonna go back and rediscuss it, I don't know that it's progressed past that.
You okay with the graduation report? Was that okay?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that was okay.
Comment on the graduation report, and I know several of the board members talked about conversations that they had with folks on, on seniors night. The, this year's seniors, I, I, you know, I was fortunate enough to know an awful lot more than this year than I did last year, and there's a bunch of excellent kids. But in my conversations with them, you know, where next, there was, there was much more this year, I think, than graduates in other years that I've seen here or before in Nashville. Students who were really, didn't want to go to college not knowing what they wanted to do because of the cost of college. And two things that struck out to me between the graduation and, and the conversations on the seniors project, one was the number of students who were either deferring college until they had more money or deferring college until they knew for sure what they wanted to do in college. And the relatively high percentage of students who opted for military and how well-received those students were at the graduation, I thought it was, it was a, a very, uh, those students, when they were announced, were very well-received and the audience was very appreciative of the, the choice that the students made, so. And it is a significant number of students in, in a school the size.
And one of those in the four-year college is also military.
Right.
I'm assuming they didn't double count, but...
Yeah.
How early do, do the kids in the high schools start hearing about college options and things like that? Is that, it seems to me that it starts in the junior year, really. And I'm, I think that it's never too early to start thinking about what your options are going to be because so much of getting into a college can depend on how well you did all the way through high school from freshman year on. It just seems, it might be helpful to have just some sort of seminar for the freshman coming in about the importance of taking their work very seriously, what the requirements...
Well, they do have a freshman day now, that they come, that one day before everybody else, like that last week, just the freshmen come.
Mm-hmm.
And they meet, they walk through their schedule, they meet with, I think they're here for two or three hours.
They have a lunch, they have like a barbecue lunch thing and then they get to ride a bus.
And when they, the end of their eighth grade year, there's a whole process of them coming up here. And I believe that they're getting that message pushed within, twice within ninety days.
And I, and I think Director Callenman has done a very nice job of pushing a lot of information out this year. And one of the conversations that we've had in our, uh, one-on-one meetings with, uh, each of the three administrative teams that we've started monthly meetings, that gives us more time to focus on that particular school, is the notion of putting, pushing that sort of message and that information down to, starting those conversations at a grade six level. You know, I've had parents who, who didn't know that their kid should be in honors Algebra One if they wanted this course. And so they're halfway through the freshman year and they're going, what do you mean, my kid should be in honors Algebra One? I mean, they're bored to tears in a regular, you know, not taking the honors option or, so those sorts of things. Because the whole planning and expectation piece, if it isn't set by grade, the students in grades six and seven don't know the success there will breed success at a higher level and a note to inspire, then it really starts to take some options away from them. And so that's one of the, one of the strategic pieces that, that we will see come out of the strategic planning session on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, is, is a goal for a more coordinated plan from six through twelve that scaffolds that stuff in in a, in a, a way that frontloads more of that information, not just to, to students and parents, but in, in a format that will allow students and parents to have the conversations. So to me, that's, that's a big piece.
Yeah, it's important. I, I know of one student in particular who didn't think they'd be able to afford college, but was a very, very good student and ended up getting a great offer from a college. This person was actually thinking of going into the military, didn't think they'd be able to afford it, and ended up going to the school of their choice, which was really wonderful. So, but this was at junior year, didn't know that the grades that this student had gotten was actually going to really help.
That's, that's probably another thing. I know, Mr. Millie, you've talked about, you know, how do parents get a hold of information about some of the NDB retesting and stuff, but I think we need to do a, a better job of communicating with parents about where their, where their child is and, and, you know, I mean, I think the, the high school handbook actually talks about, here are the sorts of graduation requirements and courses you need to get into, a highly selective school, a selective school. And we've seen tremendous growth in our kids who meet the grant estate scholars requirements. And, and I mean, if you look at the, at the huge increase in the number of kids who are taking very high-level courses and doing well with them, clearly, you know, we have a significant population of, of kids who are making some good choices and taking a lot of very intensive work that is preparing them well. But those kids tend to correlate very highly with, with parents who've gone to college themselves. And, and, you know, we need to make sure that, that, that information sort of permeates out to everybody, I think, a little bit better, but...
I mean, it just seems to me that freshman year is, is a great time to start introducing kids to the fact that college is coming up sooner than you think. Parents, if you want to start thinking about how to afford college or, you know, what, what is required, I, I think you can't, you can never start too soon. I know that junior year, there's a, a parents' night for colleges and college financing, which is wonderful. And I, I love what the school offers now, but I would just love to see that a little bit earlier, just to get kids jump-started into thinking along those lines.
So, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, a lot of parents don't understand the concept of early decision. If a student really has a particular school and they want to go early decision to wherever, I mean, my daughter went early decision to St. Ace's, that was where she wanted to go. She wanted the program that was there, she wanted to play soccer there. And, you know, you basically sign up and say, until I hear back from you, I'm not applying to anybody else. And it, it does increase your chances of getting in because they have somebody that they know is absolutely committed to that particular school. But, you know, what are the sorts of deadlines, how much earlier do you have to, have to start getting that, that stuff in? And you're really, are talking about, you know, an application process that starts in September for early decision of your junior year or of your senior year.
And there's demonstrated interest, you know, so if, if a kid starts writing to colleges in sophomore year, freshman year, asking for college brochures, you know, what are your, your entrance requirements and things like that, they, I, I'm certain...
Oh, there's no doubt, yeah.
You know, so I just, it would be nice to, to have something, and I don't know what it would be, but I'm sure Jody could, could probably think of, put something together.
I was gonna say, she sends out an email weekly, which I think she started including the board on, but I was getting them before because of having a student here. And she sent one out in March and it says freshman and sophomores, which is log on to Naviance, complete exploration surveys, it's never too early to look at, at jobs in colleges. Then the next week was announcing the financial thing and she says, it's great for sophomores to attend this as well. So she's very proactive, I think, in terms of...
She is.
She's putting the information out there, it's the horse and water analogy.
Yeah.
It shows up in your inbox... It shows up in your inbox. If you choose not to read it, you choose not to read it. But I read it simply because when you reach the point of being a senior, she's telling you about scholarships that open up.
Right.
When they close, how you apply, all these are there, something new came in, I mean, it was, it was, and then, of course, I was immediately forwarding it to my daughter. Hey, you're writing this one.
I know there's a, and I, and I met her through a, a group, and when I, when I met her, probably about four years ago. At the time, that thinking about high school graduation was not fair for, but her whole, the company she owned was coming alongside parents in their freshman year, freshman and sophomore year, and determining what they want. And it's, she, there's a billion dollars of scholarship money out there that goes unspent, unused, and she, she ties it down, there's a fee for that, tie that. But she says that she's normally able to garner thirty thousand dollars a year per student through the processes. Now, it's, it's the same thing we're talking about, early, doing all this early work and stuff like that. And I'll try to contact a couple of the people that I know that know her and see if I can't get some information from her. But, you know, again, that may be an avenue that parents can take on their own, but, you know, we could supply and say, hey, you should, you can have a conversation with this. We neither endorse nor, uh, this person, whatever, but, you know, it, it is a way. You know, in this case, um, you know, it's a way to find unfound money that, you know, but a letter out to somebody because you're, you know, like, whatever. You could get a scholarship from somebody from, you don't even know for that type of process. Wasn't there a hundred and four students in our graduating class?
I think there was a hundred and three at the end, and there was a note that two did not graduate with their class.
I saw that, but I thought there was one oh four in our last report from you that said number of students. So I thought it was one oh four. So when I saw one oh three, I was wondering what happened to the one oh fourth person.
Well, the fourth, the one oh four maybe not needed more than what they're gonna be able to do this summer when they're graduating.
That's fine.
So for those at home, they can't see what we have on our computer screens. Out of the hundred and one students that went through graduation in June from Campbell, sixty-eight are going to a four-year college. Fourteen are going to a two-year college, which gives us eighty-two out of a hundred and one, or eighty-one point two percent that are going to some form of college, six into the military, three for career education, two into the workforce, and eight had unknown plans. And then the largest two or three schools were eleven going to UNH, seven to Southern New Hampshire, and then there's several with four, Plymouth State. But we have people going as far away as Louisiana, South Florida, University of South Carolina.
Oklahoma University.
Yeah, all there. This class was definitely not striving to stay close to home.
No, it is, it is very interesting.
University of Connecticut.
The numbers of, of ones across this list is amazing. It is a very, it was a very diverse and interesting group.
University of Tampa. So, yeah, they're, they're not. Thank you, Michelle, for the reminder.
You're welcome.
Keep me on my toes. Can't even fall asleep anyway. Um, the CHS participation in the competency-based education study. This is an opportunity for the high school to participate in a study on competency-based education. And the policy says that we have to approve any school participating in a particular study. So this is, from what I read in the documentation, it's of no cost to us. And they're trying to look at competency-based education from the Nellie May Educational Foundation.
And it'll cost us time.
True.
You know, people's.
Yep.
You know, educators, their time participating.
Yeah, and I think there's a survey, they ultimately want to do a survey of students.
Pre and post, pre and post survey, less than thirty minutes apiece, but taking place.
Are they interested in doing it?
One in fall, one in spring.
Is the school interested in participating?
I'm sorry?
Do they want to participate?
Yeah. And the, the study itself is quite interesting. What they're looking at is what are, what are some of the non-academic aspects? What are the attitudinal changes that, that students may have? How are, how are students who are in competency-based programs compared to a traditionally graded program without competencies? How do their, their attitudes change about ownership of work, about, so they're looking at how student thinking is forming around the notion of, of how they think about grades and grading and that sort of thing. It was funded by Nellie May, and it's through the ILN, the CCSSO's Innovation Lab Network. I've been to two of their national workshops, and looking through this, this would appear to be part of a piece of research that's really trying to look at, so what's different about competency-based? And given that we've been doing competency-based as long as anybody in the country, it, it would probably be a good thing to see the high school participate. I'm cognizant of, of the, the time piece, but it's freshman only, and freshmen aren't involved in kneecap testing. So, you know, I think they do N W E A, actually, yes, they'll be doing N W E A next year and that's it. So they're one of the least assessed groups of students.
They could probably take advantage of a long advisory one day and.
Will we get, um.
Well, they could do it in freshman.
Will we get in to see any of the results of?
Of the overall study, yes.
Of the overall study?
Yeah.
Of, of how?
Yeah.
We're perceived, or our students.
Well, it'll, it'll just be the aggregate of the ten schools that they, they.
Okay. We will not, it won't be school-specific for us?
No.
Will it be school, school-specific to you as an administrator to be able to see that, or is it just, it's just gonna be?
It'll just be the, the final research.
And parents can opt out if they don't want their child to participate in the survey.
And it's, it's, as a research piece, it's one of the stronger parental, it, it's a, it's absolutely a ruling. It's not a, you have to tell us if you don't want your child to participate. And the, it, it's well-written in terms of informing parents of what it's gonna be used for, what it's not gonna be used for. And.
So how is the process handled to, to get everybody in, in to agree?
The students, the students would get a form that would go home that says, do you agree to let your child participate? And if the form doesn't come back signed, then the parent, then the child doesn't participate. Period. Done. And the form has all the appropriate disclaimers about, and that there's no negative consequences to your child, this is, you know. So, actually quite well done.
There's a, there's a section in the, in the consent form that talks about privacy and following FERPA, and that you're only gonna get to view aggregate data and nothing for a specific student or a school, so.
I think that the, the working thesis of the research is that a competency-based approach to instruction and grading will cause students to think differently about the learning aspect of the, of the work, as opposed to thinking of, of their course as, you know, collecting grades in a basket that just go to some sort of average.
Do we know what the, who the ten schools are that they're going to be participating, or?
No, actually, I don't.
And so they're going to be comparing these results against ten traditional schools?
No, they're gonna be, they're gonna be comparing these ten schools combined.
No, I understand, I understand. They're gonna take, they're gonna get a, these ten schools, and they're gonna get a perception or, or statistical analysis of the thought process of these ten schools and what. And are they then going to compare those results to ten other schools that are more traditional so that we can, and we'll be able to see?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay. I think that would be some very interesting information.
Is there a motion to participate in the competency-based study?
I'll make it. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Abstain? I think this is one of those, you know, we were one of the first schools in the state to come up with this, and.
Been doing it for a while.
We've been doing it for a while, so it's an opportunity to measure a school that's, and compare against others. Committee reports, if there are any.
Well, I do have some committee reports for you guys. The first thing I would like the school board to consider doing is removing from the building committee the budget committee representative.
Okay.
Not, not the person, the seat.
I know, I, I, I assumed that's where you were going, John, but the other conversation would have been more interesting.
The, the, the bottom line is, I don't believe the budget committee wishes to participate. However, the, in this case, a person who is, is a, is a private citizen who's been part of the committee, also now is on the budget committee.
And you've lost a member.
So, so they're either wearing two hats. Or they really can't wear, they can't, it's, it's very hard for them to say, I'm voting as a person, when they're an elected official for another committee that's part of the group.
Well, in the.
And I think the budget committee really wasn't excited about being part of it, so let's just.
The budget committee voted to not have that person be a voting member. And, but it's, it's Carrie Douglas, who was a former, you know, and she is an engineer, she has good insight, she's a valuable member of the committee, but because she's also the budget committee rep, she now doesn't have a vote.
Cause you can't, you can't say I'm, I'm voting as myself when she's also on the committee. So I think it would just be easier for the committee if we just voted to remove the budget committee representation on that and just go back without their representation.
She's gonna stay on, right?
She's gonna stay on, and I imagine she'll fully fill the budget committee and all the discussions. So I think we'll still have the same, the same issue, but I think it removes any conflict for her.
Yep.
And also the, the fact that that's not, it's not a committee that the budget committee wishes to be participant on. So if we can, I'll make a motion to, to make that change.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Abstain?
So in part of our discussion, Brian and Frank had brought to us, actually Frank brought this to us.
Right, that I know.
The moisture and air quality issues at GMS. And the committee strongly agreed with the cleaning out of the swales and the ditches and all of the other things around GMS, in fact, all of our schools that, that this need to be done, to begin the process of addressing water issues. In this case, this recommendation from them was to, I think it's about twenty thousand dollars that was recommended to do the cleanup process around GMS. The committee thought that would be a great idea. I would, I don't know if the school board needs to vote on it, it's, it's a bottom-line budget. So if the, if the administration finds the money and decides to do it, then that's something they should do. But the school board should be, should be aware of that, on that, and, and if we need more information, then we, we can ask for that. But I believe that's going to occur over the summer. Is that right, Frank?
That's correct.
That's right. So, so you guys should be aware of that. They brought us all up to date on the safety and stuff, and, and that is occurring at all three schools and should be finished, I believe, by the end of July. The locks, and the new key fob system, and the new controlled key systems in all the schools will, will be, will be completed. You, you should be aware that the rec department, in a very general conversation with members of the building committee that are not sitting in here today, wants to take over the fields at GMS over the bridge, and believes that they can get two or three more fields out of that field. So there may come a time, and the recommendation was for the administration to pull the deed on GMS to see if there's a way to deed relinquish that part of that property to the rec department to maintain and develop four fields for the town of Litchfield, because it seems there may be an interest in that. So that may come to us through the process of that. It may not, it may not be able to occur because the deed may say it can never occur, but it, it's something that may occur. They believe that they can maintain those fields under their budget in a more timely fashion and things like that, so.
The other interesting piece is there's a minimum lot size under the school approval standards, I think. I think it's under school approval standards. You gotta have so much, so much acreage for this type of school.
Okay.
And whether that, losing that land.
Well, yeah, there's.
What effect.
We imagine.
But I mean, it's even beyond the deed. It's, yeah, we could certainly deed it over to them, but does that then put us, if we need to have thirty acres, are we now at twenty-six or some? I think thirty acres is the minimum.
I'd have to look it up. It sounds familiar.
For the, for the, for an elementary, and then I think when you get to the high school, it's larger.
Mr. Lynch made the point that there would be a way to, to allow them to have stewardship of that land without changing the title, which may be one of the better ways.
It seems to make more sense. Probably want to talk to Primax about that one.
Yeah, well, you, you should be aware, probably a lot of conversation may, may occur on that.
Interesting idea.
And then the, probably the most lengthy discussion we had that probably took about forty minutes of our time is storage. And as we went through the process, it, it's apparent that we don't have enough storage. And as we talked about each school, I'll start at, at GMS first. My recommendation is GMS is easily fixed. We just need to figure out what's the proper way of accessing the old school part of the building in the correct, with the correct codes and correct things to be able to use that as storage. And, and if not, then what is, what do we need to do to fix that part of the building to bring it to whatever code we need to for storage, not for classrooms, but for storage? And so we believe we can solve GMS's issues in that building.
Just, John, just, I don't, I don't know if you were on the board, I think you were, that's a change in use. I know the minimum when we looked at this before was gonna be sprinklers.
Yes, well, it, it, it's still, it may be, and, and it may be one of those things that we have to go to the voters with, war an article for this and war, I mean, but it, it.
That may be more than building a new building.
But it, it did seem to think that there was a way to work that process, and then the voters can, you know, if the voters say no, then, then they're gonna have these trailers popping up all over the place because there's, for storage.
We have a different plan, but.
Or a different plan. At LMS, they, they need more storage, and, you know, and it happened, my question was, why haven't we ever looked at turning the, the little green pasture of land that we have at the sixth grade, and I don't know what the other wing is, maybe the seventh grade wing, why don't we turn that into storage? And so there may be ways to build stuff onto LMS to alleviate some of their storage issues there. And then we got to the high school, and there were many, many different topics. But in reality, where we came to the conclusion for the high school was, they don't really know exactly how much storage they need. They probably need for the maintenance, probably somewhere between twenty-four hundred and five thousand square feet, which would be an office, a repair shop, and a storage plots for all their equipment. Then the idea is where would you put it? The recommendation could be a steel building. Mr. Grant seems to think we should build it on to the back corner of CHS, because everything is power, water, electrical, and all that stuff is, is right there. So we've tasked the administration to actually figure out what they need for storage and things like that. And to come back to the building committee in our September ninth meeting, I think is when our next, our next meeting is. And present what they have there, and then we'll kick that around. The goal is to, to have a couple of meetings on that, and begin to have, begin to have a plan in place as we're going into our budget season. as we're going into our budget season. So the, the school board can be aware of some thoughts and stuff like that for budgets. And at the same time, as we're going through that and making our determinations, also what we need to do if we decide to try to push some of these things through is Warren articles, which seems to probably be the most appropriate way to do most of those repairs. There also seemed to be some conversation from some of the members who go into other meetings in the town, that there's a change in philosophy on impact fees. And that because of those change of impact fees, hence the growth of the sports departments, the growth of the music department in bands, since there's been growth of those programs. And if their need has outgrown the existing buildings and stuff like that, and storage and stuff, that impact fees may be able to be used to build said storage facilities and stuff like that. So I think Frank was gonna take the lead on that and try to see if Gordon was along with the same lines as the new.
Town council.
Town council and stuff, and agreeing to those things. Because the town seems, the town seems to think that that, those things are good use of that, of those funds. So, which would, could help with that process of funding and stuff like that. So it was a productive, you know, hour meeting and stuff like that. And we seemed to have grabbed hold of two, of a couple of items that I think will take four or five months to get to the, to the end. But may be something that the school board should be aware of, that's percolating behind the scenes.
When Mr. Bennett and staff started talking to Mr. Merkowitz and I about the storage issue for buildings and grounds. And we looked at, at, over the years, we've, well, brought online since the high school, since the high school was, was built, we've brought online the stadium field, which really was never planned to be a field, which is why it's not graded for a field, it's flat, as opposed to having a crown. The practice field, which was never really a field, there's potential to bring a field on in LMS. And there was a time that the district was not maintaining two of the fields at GMS, that in fact, the town was. So we've now, I think, have the equipment that we need to maintain those fields, and the staff do a really nice job of it. But it has become a storage issue, and what's happened over time is the storage needs of that group have impinged on the high school's ability, and there's limited storage here. So you have that red building out back that has, you know, buildings and grounds equipment, and stuff for plays, and athletic uniforms, and kids climbing in and around, you know, getting equipment. And, you know, we've added, besides football and wrestling and lacrosse, we've added robotics. We've added, you know, a strong recycling program. And now the LMS plays are happening up here, and all of this impinges on what was fairly limited space to begin with at the high school. So I, I think the committee members were all actually in favor of addressing this in a significant way, doing it well. In fact, when the, the notion of a, of a 40 by 60 building was posed, two of the members basically said, "Don't you think that's a little small?" Because if you really look at the cost differential to do something, you would barely be able to get your equipment in there. How are you gonna maintain it? How are you gonna make sure that you meet OSHA requirements for safety, getting in and around the equipment? So it was a very, you know, well-received idea. Thank you to Mr. Bennett and Jack Esperance for putting in the background work.
Oh, they just started now. They've got a lot of work to do now. And I got an email from Brian, but he didn't give me any update from the budget committee.
Oh, I watched it.
Oh, okay, maybe you have the update.
Brian, Brian had a little entertainment where they discussed the fund balance, and the budget committee asserted that the cut that they took was the right cut to take in terms of salaries and benefits, because we have all this money left. And Brian rightly pointed out that the money left isn't from salaries and benefits. In fact, some of those are overspent.
Total district salaries and benefits was overspent.
Yeah, and Brian was.
And Brian.
You know, was like the salmon going upstream against.
Yeah.
Against Mr. Spencer and some other members that were adamant that that was the right thing to do, and it all panned out, and because there's $600,000 left. You know, the, the school board cried, you know, that the cut was, cuts were too severe, and it turns out that, you know, there was more than enough money and whatever. And then the town, I think, is probably getting more scrutiny than the school in terms of their budget at this point with the police cars, SUVs, whatever you wanna call them, and police purchase. And how that whole thing is handled, so. It was an interesting couple of hours.
Brian did, did briefly send this email that they've, they backed off their process of picking a number and telling us to get to it. However, their, their goal is, they expect zero increase. That's their, however, that, that's fine, I mean, the voters already passed $600,000, so there's, the zero increase will be what, what the voters passed will be, you know, that's the zero increase. It's not a, you know, it can't be a zero increase if our budget is 20 million, and they pass 500,000. Now our budget, budget's gotta be 20,500, 20 million, 500,000, so.
And they're only ever looking at half the equation.
Is the other side.
You could come in with a $20 million budget, you could come in with a budget that's, you know what? We're just gonna level it, the budget committee takes one vote, and that's what comes out of the budget committee. But if revenues are $600,000 short. You don't have a zero tax increase. You may have a flat budget, but you don't have a. So, you know, it's, you gotta look at the whole equation, and unfortunately, you don't know the whole equation until you get to September of the year after you pass the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then there's special education.
Yeah, and there's specialized, so. It was an interesting meeting to watch, if you wanna kill an hour and a half sometime.
I can go catch it on the.
I watched it on cable is, is where I ended up watching it, so. Which takes us to old and unfinished business, the International Students MOU. I know Dr. Cochran forwarded out to the board some documentation that we got after we voted to move ahead with that, that we probably need the board to weigh in on. So there's a questionnaire in our packet that doesn't cost us anything other than someone's time to fill it out.
I didn't really see any issues in the questionnaire or anything like that, so.
No, the interesting piece to me was, it's this MOU that commits us to absolutely nothing and commits us to getting absolutely nothing. I've never seen one quite so vacuous before. It's almost like you'll sign this MOU, so you'll sign another MOU later that actually says what's gonna happen.
Well, I noticed it, I did notice in, in, in that you're, you're locking yourself into a relationship with these people until you terminate the relationship with these people, which you can do at, at any point in time.
So it seems to be low risk because it is so wide open, but at the same point in time, I'm not sure. And the only other thing that, that concerned me a little bit when I talked about this is a pilot school, you know, in anticipation of federal legislation changes to F-1 visas. Now, in light of the earlier announcement about Western New Hampshire, I don't know how quickly we're gonna have changes to the F-1 visa situation.
The whole immigration, visa issue, I don't see anything being solved out of DC anytime soon.
Principal Rothaus has indicated before that the, the person that, that they've been having conversations with is a gentleman by the name of John House Myers, who's a principal at Bo. And his doctoral research is on, in fact, this process, which Bo is ahead of us at. And so, you know, given the situation, it may be appropriate, regardless of what happens in terms of the MOU tonight, to ask Principal Rothaus to, if she can find a time when, when he, the two of them can come and find a little more directly from Principal House Myers, you know, how this works, and what are the anticipated changes to the F-1 visa process? Because right now, F-1 visas are limited to one year, and then you have to go home. And so this is the anticipation of fee-paying students who would come for a four-year lease. So there's just a lot of questions. And, you know, Laura has indicated that, that John seemed to open to coming and having a conversation with it because it's something that's near and dear to, to his heart, so maybe something that the board wants to think about.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and allow the process to continue.
Is there a second? Second discussion?
So this is going to be, going to be students who sign on for this from freshman year through senior, the same student? The same students are going to be here for four years, or is it going to be?
My understanding is that that's the goal, although current F-1 visa regulations do not permit it. So that's why it's part of a pilot.
So right now, if they, if you did it, a student would come for one year?
Yes.
And then go back?
That makes sense, though, I mean, how many kids are willing to?
Many.
Or parents are willing to?
Many.
Send their kids?
Many.
To a foreign country to go to school for?
Many.
What countries are they coming from?
Question.
I don't believe there's any countries that, that are from the foreign exchange student, if it's foreign exchange, you get them from China, North Korea, Japan, Thailand, Urkistan, Kyrgyzstan, Norway, Denmark, Spain, Germany.
I, I don't think that there's, it's an accident that it's a New England group, or sorry, a New Zealand group, because a lot of, of the clientele is China, Japan, Korea. This is, this is a movement that started with universities and has pushed its way down to.
It's a way to get your, your student into an American university for education. Because you're here already for four years. And then I, I don't know what the law, but the law must allow that if they'd apply for a student visa for university, and if they've been here for four years, they probably have a better chance of getting those things.
Or they just stay.
Now, would we still approve them on a student-by-student basis, like?
I would imagine that once we accept the program, the, the school would administer and screen the applicants. But I would, I would imagine.
I think they're gonna work with.
It's not inexpensive, I mean, it's, it's $12,000 or $13,000 to us, as a district. And then it's another $10,000 to the family in the district that hosts this individual, so. And then that's just for hosting them. Then the student would probably need their own walking around money. So it's, it's probably a, a mom and dad commitment of 25 to 30 grand. And that's just, and then there are times that they fly back. I mean, they're gone for a month, they're only here for 10, I think when I read it, it was 10, 46 out of 52 weeks, they're in the States. So there's six weeks that they've, and I don't know if that falls at Christmas, or if it falls in the summer or where, but there's six weeks that they go back home, but that's, but that's it. And the rest of the time, they're entrenched with the family that they're living with.
My other question would be, I'm assuming that all these kids are gonna be fluent in English?
Yes.
So they won't need any support from?
Well, I, I use my, the foreign exchange students that we've had. Some of them were very, well, good in English. The one that wasn't, the person that foreign exchange student from China who struggled when he left here was very good at English because of his personality and how he worked the process. Yeah, the understanding is that they can immerse themselves into the process very, very quickly. I mean, that's the expectations on one-year students.
In response to where I think your, your question is headed, our normal tuition agreements with other districts has a rider in it that indicates that the sending district or the parents are responsible for any expenses related to 504s, IEPs.
Extra services.
ELL issues, you know, that sort of thing, so.
Something like that, in their language to help them.
Yes, yes.
I think it's great to have kids from foreign countries come. Kind of a homogeneous group.
Yeah, on the surface, anyway. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Upstayed? Thank you. So now we're going to policy.
You sound so excited.
Yes. EEAEA, mandatory drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers, which is a new policy.
This is just a draft, so you can put anything, you know, you can fix it any way you want. I didn't go into too much on the procedures because we don't own a school bus or employ a driver. And the proceed, they have to, for the send, the contractor has to follow the law. So I thought the policy would, would be enough.
Having dealt with this same policy in a prior district, I can tell you that First Student is compliant, obviously, they're a national company. And getting certification from them is usually a pretty perfunctory exercise. The issue becomes if we're special education busing in cost savings, you end up with, you know, a, a small company outside of First Student. Then it becomes more problematic, and the policy comes into play a little bit more. Mr. Merkowitz is.
Fully agree. But it's, it's a policy required by law, so it's not a matter really that, that there's much to it. We just have to do our due diligence and recognize that, that, number one's a liability issue if we're not, if something happens and we're not complying. And two, it is, it is, I think, the appropriate thing to do for a reason.
So a question that I have, and maybe it's on purpose, but the second paragraph and the fourth paragraph seem to be talking about the same topic, but one talks about, yes, we use a vendor, and they're gonna do something every two years with a certificate. The fourth paragraph says, if we contract with a vendor, they're gonna do it on an annual basis with drug and alcohol. So is the second paragraph just, is it a physical examination versus a drug testing?
Well, the second paragraph was a, like, more of a generalization when I looked at the policy that was, that came from the NHSBA. And it, you know, you, I think, I, I'm not really sure if it's, I think it's, I think it's a physical test that they have to go to the doctor, they have to get a physician's note that says they're fit for employment under the law. And then they, the vendor has to provide us proof that they've done that, and a copy of the certification of the driver. From what I understand about the law.
Paragraph two is about the physical condition, and four specifically, the drug and alcohol testing is required by law. But it is, the, the paragraph structure is odd.
It is, it's very strange.
And the, the fourth paragraph shouldn't say "if" the school district, it should say "the" school district. I realize it's probably out of the NHS.
That's fine.
Yeah, just to correct that. And it looks like paragraph two is just a restatement of 200:37.
Basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a very oddly put together policy, I struggled with this.
I mean, other than that, I, it seems like it's being driven by the law and then probably what First Student's requirements are, since.
Do you find any stray wills that should be shells? I got them all.
Do they use wills in their policies?
They used them, I thought they used one or two, but I changed them because they didn't sound right.
I think they're all shells. If you make that, from my vantage point, if you make that change, you could bring it back for a first reading.
Okay.
All the stuff that's after it, that's pages two and three?
That's just the sample.
That's just the sample.
That's from the contract? Is that the information from our contract?
NHSBA, isn't it?
No, that's from the School Board Association sample policy.
Oh, okay.
Required by law policy, and most of it is procedure, but where we don't.
Don't we, wouldn't we want to reference our, our, the, the existing contract that we have signed with whatever, in this case, First Student, be a reference, not a legal reference, but a reference? You know, that we're referencing also all policies in our, you know, all things that we've agreed to in, in our written contract or something? You know, don't, I mean, do we want to?
First Student LSD contract.
You know, I think you want to attach, reference that contract because, just for a simple reason, that if there's not something that's here, and it's in the contract that we've, we've made reference to the contract to help, in case somebody says, well, you didn't cover here, and you don't have any reference to the contract, and the contract says, yes, this has to happen, but.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah. Add like a see also, or, or reference the contract that's signed. Any other comments on EEAEA? We're up to five letters now, so it's, they'd make it even more difficult.
It's my idea.
Pretty soon, we're gonna have policy A, B, C, D, E, F, G, L, M, N, O, Z. Don't have to go to numbers. So next up, GBCD, background investigation and criminal records check.
This policy, we had started this policy back in two thousand nine, and never.
Finished for some good reason.
Never really came back to the board.
We didn't want to finish it.
So I, yeah, I, I kind of finished it. Well, we had some upgrades to it, too, from the policy sample. The policy sample, they, they included a technical advisory and procedures. We already have a procedure in place, we just follow what the law tells us, basically. I don't think we really need to spell that out unless the board thinks we need to put that in there, but, because Paul, you know, sometimes procedures change, so. But we've got everything down, and I've got on, actually on one of the drives that we share with the other schools, I have all the procedures down for volunteers and hiring, fingerprint and background investigations, so that all, it's all consistent with the, within the district.
What does it mean by someone under criminal records checks comes in direct contact with pupils on a daily basis for any period of time? Does that mean zero more minutes, basically?
Under volunteers?
No, under criminal records check.
Oh, okay.
It says persons regularly in contact with students means, and then number one, comes in direct contact with pupils on a daily basis for any period of time. Like, any period of time just seems vague to me. Is that literally, if you see, if you have direct contact?
The law has. Direct contact with children, could be one minute or one hour?
So are volunteers who come into the schools now? The non-paid volunteers, the moms, dads, or whatever, they come into the schools to read or whatever. They're all gonna have to go through criminal background checks?
No, because they're volunteers.
Only if they're a designated volunteer. And they meet the criteria that would leave them generally in one-on-one contact with a student, unsupervised. So if you're coming in to do photocopying for a teacher, and you're never gonna be left unsupervised with any children, you typically don't meet the criteria of a designated volunteer.
But a, but a room, a room mother, it could, that could occur, the teacher steps out of the room for a second.
It should never occur.
It, it shouldn't, and if we're doing the orientation for the people who are supervising them, well, it, it shouldn't. So there's, there's two sides to it. There's, there's the, the background check for designated volunteers, and then there's ensuring that, that we're not taking people who have not got this clearance and not been in designated volunteer status, making sure that they're not left alone.
And just so the board knows, regular school volunteers are checked on the, I don't need to imply anything, but we do check the sex offender registry on all school regular volunteers. So we do, do some kind of a check, but the, we, the district pays the fee for volunteer background check, so.
Yeah. Where you have to do your due diligence is if you have a parent volunteer, as we do at the LMS and GMS libraries, who's working there while the library is in the room. If it's likely that the librarian or whoever's supervising will be out, and the person will be left checking out books, for example, with a student, then that position shouldn't be included as a designated volunteer. So you have to err in the side of.
We certainly don't, don't want to dissuade people from volunteering.
No, 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 no.
Which I think is where you were going.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I.
The principals do a really good job of orientation with the school volunteers.
No, and at, and at the same time, we don't, you know, we don't want it to be cumbersome, that, that, you know.
There's, there's clearly the minimum, as Michelle indicated, that we're doing, but you don't want to make it so cumbersome that somebody says, yeah, it's not worth my.
Exactly.
This is that conversation we were having before our meeting started. We were talking about school safety and how much do you need to do, and all those things, and, and, you know. You don't want to have to do, you know, you don't want to make it overburden some and all that process until you didn't, you know, in that, in that sense.
And even regular school volunteers are, are required to fill out a confidentiality statement just because they overhear something, or, you know, because, you know, you might be walking down the hall and hear something. So we, we have them fill that out, and we have them fill out the assurance statement from the law that talks about, you know, child protection.
Any other questions or comments on GBCD? Otherwise, we can bring it back for a first reading. Which takes us to JICI, weapons on school property.
This is another required by law policy. I realize we have the safe school, you know, zone policy, and we do reference that. But this goes into specifics about the law and what weapons are defined as, and also modification of expulsion of students that bring weapons onto school property.
This issue is also addressed on the MOU, in the MOU with Litchfield Police Department, in terms of what we have to report to them. So it's, it's, because of the law, it's kind of double-covered?
So this one, the interesting part I found in this one was that members of the public who violate this policy may be reported to local law enforcement authorities if possession of the weapon is used in a threatening, harassing, or intimidating manner. Would we always report it, or, I mean, if it's, if it's used in a threatening, harassing, or intimidating manner, I would think we'd always report it, wouldn't we?
Even have to be reported.
So if somebody has, if somebody just wants.
Have to leave something here, John.
I did have the question at a policy meeting before that came from a board member who asked if a US citizen, knowing there's Second Amendment, I believe is correct, rights, and is a gun-carrying member who happens to drive onto the school parking lot to pick up a child.
Yeah.
Would, would that be considered a violation of the policy and the law? And my answer was duh, yes. So the question was, so what is the, the, you know, law-abiding citizen who's protected under the Constitution have to do? Do I mean, take your gun out and set it on the curb five hundred feet away from the school? And then get your child and go pick your gun up, and, and I'm going, the law's the law.
There, there's, so there's a law that says you're not allowed to bring a gun on school property?
United States Code, section twenty, seventy-one fifty-one.
Well, it did lead to some minisurizing conversations when we did the same thing with respect to alcohol, but so what do you do when you're doing a wine reduction sauce in a cooking class at night? So does that actually qualify? We actually sought legal opinion on whether or not that would violate.
That would be in.
That would have been okay.
That would be in our adult-curriculated, um, adult.
Education program?
Educational program. We hope we're not doing that in our, our schools' cooking classes.
Well, but the alcohol's off.
Or same thing.
And nobody's inhaling.
Pick up your kids' home or something. That's it. Got wine and beer in the car, right?
Yeah.
See, I think you can drive through with wine if you're in the car.
So we, we could opt out of this policy, Michelle, if we took no federal funds?
And it's totally up to the school board.
Really?
I'm not gonna, you might pick it one way or the other.
It says right in, in the, the US Code that any school that accepts federal funds has to have a policy which basically states the first sentence, that any student that brings a weapon in to school is expelled for twelve months.
Any student?
Right. I'm just saying, we could not have this policy if we chose to not take any federal funds. Which would probably cause Frank to have a mild heart attack in terms of the reimbursement for lunch, because I'm sure that's classified as federal funds.
Are we back to the french fry argument?
If we sold fries, we could give up federal funds.
Angus cattle out back and bring in shotguns and shoot, try this hunting and fishing, vast team out there.
Hey, we got a fishing team.
We got a fishing team. We'll make do, Mr. Chairman.
I could suggest an amendment to this. The sentence says, members of the public who violate this policy may be reported to local law enforcement authorities if possession of the, if they're not supposed to have a weapon on school grounds, they're not supposed to have a weapon on school grounds. So I would change it to shall be reported to local law enforcement authorities, period. Because below, there's a sentence that says the superintendent, I mean, it, there can be inadvertent, and then that's, it's up to superintendent or other building administrator to decide whether or not this is something to be worried about, but, and can ignore, I guess, and let it go, but.
At which page are you on?
I'm on.
The bottom of page one.
Exactly.
I don't think we would want to put any administrator in the position of a shall decision. I think it should change. Shall should be will, and I would agree, it should be period. And then if it occurs, they have to report. Has to go, be, whether it go right up the chain, or whether it goes to the principal, and the principal makes the call.
I, I can tell you what's in the MOU, and the, the MOU is actually relatively specific. If a student, for example, inadvertently brings to school a pellet pistol, a knife, anything like that, reaches into their backpack and goes, oh, my goodness. I didn't realize they take, didn't take this out after scouts last night. Teacher, I have this, I'm sorry. Then that is inadvertent, and if, however, you have a situation where they find that they have it, and instead of immediately telling the teacher, they start to tell other students about it, that's treated as a totally different situation. So the MOU itself specifically overlaps with this, and, and it's specific about the context in which it isn't treated as an offense. On the first instance that the student is aware of it, they have to immediately contact an adult in an authority position, inform them of it, turn it over, and then you go through, you know, a, a little bit of a protocol.
And I agree with that. I think that's perfectly reasonable.
The way this reads, it means, it, it, without that level of specificity, I, I agree with you, it leaves it a little vague.
But it certainly, it says students, it reads to me that student violations of this policy will result in school disciplinary action and notification to local law enforcement authorities. So that sounds like there's no discretion there, because the, but members of the public, as long as they're not threatening people with it, they can violate the law. And then the last sentence really seems to deal with an adult violating the policy, but not students. So I agree with you. I think that there should be some discretion where a student specifically realizes inadvertently they have something they're not supposed to have, goes immediately to an authority figure and to surrender it. And then I, I, I think discretion should happen there.
That's in the first paragraph. That's covered.
Okay.
This expulsion may be modified by the superintendent upon review of the specific case in accordance with other applicable law.
But where you have a member of the public who violates this policy, and if you want to leave, may be reported to local law enforcement authorities, or shall, or will.
I would get rid of the.
But I would, if possession, I would just say, period. They, there is going to be, or could be some report to local law enforcement authorities.
You know, you, you can, if you go out and look, you can find one incident a week where somebody in an open carry state is walking down the street, and somebody calls the police because they feel threatened. You know, this person did nothing wrong, it's an open carry state, they have a license, they met all the conditions.
But that's the one thing, if they're walking down the street.
But no, no, I'm just saying, it's the threatening, harassing, they say, oh, I found it threatening, therefore, the police have to show up and do something because they found it threatening, so.
Right.
I'm just saying, when you get into that, oh, was it threatening, was it harassing, was it, you know? You don't want to be in that judgment zone.
If they're not supposed to have it on school grounds, they're not supposed to have it on school.
Well, and the problem becomes, if you, if you leave a great deal of flexibility with it, then you're leaving it up to somebody's judgment over whether or not someone poses a risk, and then you're in a whole area of hurt in terms of.
I, I, I agree with, with Janine that we probably want to get rid of the if possession of the weapon. And we shall report it to local law enforcement and let them, we're not.
You want shall?
We're not passing judgment, we're doing what we're required to do by law. We reported it, it's up to the police chief.
That's right. He, how, how he investigates and deals with it is.
Yep.
His jurisdiction.
Yep.
Sentence before that that says student violations of this policy will result in both school disciplinary action, blah, blah. Do you want that to be shall as well?
Yes, I would think.
And I would assume you want me to reference the memorandum of understanding?
Yes, as a, as another reference.
The second last paragraph, members of the public who violate this policy may be reported if possession is used in a threatening, harassing, or intimidating, may?
Well, we said shall.
Okay.
Shall be, that's what Derek came up with.
I was just surprised that that was in the original draft.
It was, and I, I have to keep them shocked.
So, one thing that I'm torn with here is in the, it's about halfway down, and it talks about defining weapons for the purpose of this policy. It talks about aerosol self-dispary weapons as not being permitted.
Like mace?
As the father of a daughter.
Who may leave in school at this hour?
Well, they're, you know, and, and I suspect, I, I, I don't know what gets taught in the rad course, but I suspect that's one thing that's, you know, discussed, is whether you have that. And I know they are sold that clip onto your keys, so you have them available. So you could have someone legally in possession of that.
You could have a high school student who's gonna leave school and drive directly to their job as a waitress somewhere, and who, you know.
I mean, if, if this, if this, and I, and this is not required by, I think it's title twenty of US Code, or section twenty, title, whatever the number is, for the weapon, for the firearms, part of me says, I, I think that's a reasonable thing for a woman to have.
But let me just argue this. Okay, so take the devil's advocate position. If you are going to remove that from the list of weapons, then you are allowing members of the public to come on to school property with that. And I would say anything that can incapacitate anyone, something you can walk onto school property with something that's capable of incapacitating someone, that's.
How about a pencil?
Well.
I mean, where do you draw, just where do you?
Baseball bat, yeah.
Baseball bat. I got a baseball bat in my car, but, or I have a softball bat.
See, they fall under Billy.
I don't, this is the problem with these policies is.
I know, I know.
May you draw that line?
And even, even beyond students, what about staff members who have to leave at eleven o'clock at night after budget committee meetings, you know? That park, that, that back parking lot's pretty dark, you know?
I mean, so, I, I'm just telling you my opinion, because it's, it's, it's a board's decision. I don't know if we need to talk to Gordon to see, can, you know, do we have to define the weapon, or can we leave it to a discretionary?
It may be in the statute.
So, oh, it's defined in the statute as to what it is. So, oh, the, it's defined in the statute as to what it is.
Right.
But I don't know whether that's part of the safe school act.
Well, it says aerosol self-defense spray weapons as defined in RSA. Does RSA 159 dash 20 talk about it being mace?
It says, "Any aerosol self-defense spray weapon which is designed to immobilize or incapacitate a person temporarily."
Yeah, I would say.
Oddly enough.
I would say.
It's under the pistols and revolvers section of the law as a self-defense weapon. It's the same, the same section where they define the taser.
Does the may in the last paragraph make more sense now?
The problem is.
But you could have, that could be a student as well. You know, I, so I think there's a clear, in my mind anyway, and maybe it's not clear, from an offensive and a defensive weapon. I, if you're going to come here to do something, you're not going to bring 27 little things of mace with you. Because it's typically not viewed as an offensive weapon. It's, I'm going to incapacitate someone so I can get away, and that's what people are kind of taught to do. I don't know if we can make that distinction, if we, if we can and if the board wants to.
Defensive weapons.
Well, the problem, the problem with that is that if it's, if it's useful as a defensive weapon, it's very useful as an offensive weapon. So, um, I, I'm on the fence. I understand exactly what you're saying. And I'm, but I'm on the fence on it because I, I, I would rather err on the side of saying nothing that is created to incapacitate anyone temporarily or longer than that, um, is appropriate on school grounds. I understand what you're concerned about.
I mean, so I, I wonder if we can just get rid of the, for the purposes of this policy, because the next one says weapon is, we could say weapon is defined as any device, instrument, material, substance which is used, attempted to be used, or threatened to be used as readily capable of causing death or serious physical injury.
Oh, yeah, that's a good modifier because.
I think, because that's not the intention of a self-defense aerosol. I'm just going to call it that. I'm going to incapacitate you. It shouldn't cause physical harm in the vast majority of instances. And then that covers a pencil. If I use the pencil and I start stabbing Janine with it, clearly I've turned that artifact into a weapon, which you could do, I could beat you with a microphone.
Right. Well, you have weapons per se, and then you have weapons depending on.
Of convenience.
On, on what, how they're used.
Yeah, so maybe, I, I don't know if we can do it, but, because I think everything limited, or everything listed in the paragraph above that is pretty obvious as a weapon. And then if we, if we don't have that paragraph, that I think gives us a little bit of discretion should that happen.
I guess the problem is if we don't have the paragraph above, including, say, slingshots and brass knuckles and billy clubs, could someone say, "Well, I'm not using it in a threatening way, so it's not a weapon?"
Good point, yeah.
So I kind of like them both there, but I would support removing aerosol self-dispray specifically. Just because the other ones, I can't see any reason they'd ever be on school property. Slingshot, metallic knuckles, billy clubs, knives, tasers. They shouldn't be allowed, period.
Do the trebuchets have to be listed as a weapon? It's basically a giant slingshot.
It is.
Catapult.
Yeah, but they only throw balloons.
And I don't want to devolve into the.
Yeah.
Into the minutia. I just, I, I could see that, depending on the situation, that you might have, you know, dozens of.
Yeah.
Women in the school, whether it's a teacher, a student, an administrator that has that on their keychain or in their purse or in their car.
I was going to say, what if someone runs in the woods a lot and has mace in their car for those opportunities? Like, just sometimes they go for runs in the woods or something.
In case there's a bear.
Could be sitting in the car, yeah.
I think that, um, I think we need to talk to Gordon.
Oh, I saw that.
That's what, I thought that was weird, too.
I think we should, uh, send this to Gordon and tell him what our concerns are.
I think that's fine.
And, and, and have him come back to us, you know. I know Frank doesn't want to talk to Gordon, so.
No, that's not true.
I mean, the other way.
I'm a little concerned about legal fees. Just because I said that, you're saying our building's grounded.
The other way to get at, to get at the same.
Paying attention there, Mr. Gordon. I know.
The same end result might be to just remove, under the last paragraph, unintentional violations of this policy if removed by adults. I guess you could argue, I had it on my keychain. I didn't, I didn't intend to use it. It just happens to be there. I, I, it would just be something to ask Gordon, can we, how can we approach this, given the board's concern?
Yeah.
And maybe it's a non-issue. I don't know.
Yeah, I, this is one, this is one that, um.
This is like the bullying.
This is no, there's no right answer. I mean, there, there isn't any.
You're going to get caught.
Just so you know, this is when my phone rings from one of the other three schools. When people, when principals go, "So I'm reading the policy," and I'm going, "What do I do now?" "Is it all stock this room?" This has only happened twice since I've been here.
Well, I, I only just thought of, again, with the aerosol self-defense spray weapons. This, and the last thing I'll say about it, but, um, one concern I would have, and I've actually seen this happen because I used to have one of those pepper spray things a long time ago. And I had a family member, not one of my kids, but an adult family member go, "Hey, what's this? Does this work?" And pointed it at his face, and luckily it was so old that it didn't work anymore. And, and, you know, it's like, no! In, in a house, actually did that. So, um, but my concern would be if, if kids are carrying this stuff around in keychains, if it's, there is a potential for somebody to be hurt. And then, you know, would the school be responsible if, if we're allowing something like that on school property and some kid inadvertently hurts himself with it? Or, um, even if it's temporary, I mean, those, those are awful, so, um, anyway, that's the last thing I would say.
Having Gordon take a look.
Yeah, I, I probably imagine that he's going to say, "You got to leave it in," but, but.
And that's okay. Then we know. And someone can say, "Why did you, didn't you consider this?" And we say, "Yes," and the legal opinion was that we have to have it in there.
I have to say, I.
We'd like to hide behind Gordon.
I found the conversation very illuminating. And I think, having reflected now on, after all the conversation, if the shall goes into the second last paragraph and the may stays, I'm relatively comfortable with it.
Okay. I, I still refer to Gordon and say, "This is what we're thinking and."
This paragraph allows the exception that you're seeking.
I think you got to get rid of the by adults if you're going to do that, though.
Oh, yeah, that way.
Because the top only talks about guns.
Yes.
And the student exception versus.
You're right.
The bottom one talks about, oh, you've got some flexibility across the entire situation.
Yeah, because if it, if it was a student, you have no flexibility. I mean, the, 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 the question is, is, it says, "Student violations of this policy result in both school disciplinary action and notification of local law enforcement authorities. The superintendent or other building administrator may exercise his or best judgment in determining the scope of this policy as it relates to the inadvertent or unintentional violations of this policy, provided..." So this is probably one of those places where, um, inadvert or unintentional violations needs to be, um, defined by the administrators in advance to teachers and staff.
Procedure and.
You know, it can't be one of these things where, what is after a fact? What is inadvert or unintentional violations? It needs to be one of those things where in training to the staff, the administration says pertaining to this policy, "This is what we mean when inadvert or unintentional policies are done. This is what falls in that category." And if, and maybe they'll have other instances which at that point in time can be discussed and need be brought back to the board to, to clarify how we, how we think of it. But yes, I would agree with Brian. If somebody, my son's a scout, so he could very easily have his stuff in his backpack and, 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 you know, been on a camping trip or whatever, and, and one pocket of a, of a backpack is something.
A Leatherman.
You know, and.
Or a kid works at a supermarket and if he gets it, he's got a box cutter in his.
Box cutter in his backpack.
And we actually had an issue with a scout at one point and there was no flexibility in the policy whatsoever.
Page 35 of the CHS Student Handbook. "In addition to the above references, Litchfield School District's definition of banned items includes all firearms, knives, dangerous weapons, and all items that are not normally considered weapons but are used in a threatening manner. If a student mistakenly brings a banned item to school, she or he must immediately surrender the item to a school administrator. No disciplinary action will occur in this instance. However, a banned item is not voluntarily surrendered to an administrator prior to its discovery."
That was the case.
Kind of hard to do that. "Disciplinary consequences will be administered at the principal or designated meeting's discretion." Well, clearly it can't be turned over before the student discovers it, but.
Well, discovery by any other person, right.
Well, if I, this is my backpack and.
And I say, "Hey, can I borrow a pencil?"
Yeah.
And I go in, I say, "Hey, look, Brian's got a gun!"
Oops.
He'd say, "No, no, no, that's just a lighter."
So that's how that, that's, you know.
I think that's kind of the wording that's in the other paragraphs.
And that's what's in the MOU.
Let's, let's.
One of the more interesting cases I've been involved in is when a lighter and a can of Axe Body Spray was used to set a kid's hair on fire.
That's definitely threatening.
Herring.
It's threatening manner, yes. So why don't we get that?
Maybe not so much threatening.
Michelle can make those couple changes and then we can run it by Gordon and.
What about the, um, the superintendent or building administrator exercise his or best judgment? Is this a case where you might always want the best judgment to be exercised at the highest level?
He may not be available. He could be in a conference or vacation or sick and.
That doesn't seem to stop the law.
I'm just setting my.
Yeah, but I think this would need, this would need a little bit more, uh, immediate attention than, "Hey, Brian, we got to pull you off the beach."
We need you on plane.
That's happening.
You need to fly back.
Oh, I miss doing policies.
See how much fun you've had?
I'm just thinking this is going to be like the bullying policy that just took forever.
No, we'll, we'll get it. We'll get it.
Involved here for that committee, too. That was fun.
The manifest has enough signatures, I take it?
It has four.
John, we need your signature on that one. That's the authorization for the payroll through the year. That way we'll have all five just to make it all approved. Thank you. Second round of public input. Now, I'm sure there's people that have yelled at their TV if they're watching over the length of this meeting.
So what, all right, just so I know, what was this, we just signed?
This authorizes the payment of payroll.
Oh, okay.
Pending.
Were you going to scratch it out if you changed your mind?
Well. Do it all over, guys.
You just, you just basically admitted that you've got pepper spray in your truck and we'll be going out to do a search. Uh, so we need to go into non-public session under RSA 91 dash A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, A through C. A, the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him unless the employee affected one has the right to a meeting. Two, request that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. B, the hiring of any person as a public employee. C, matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself unless such a person requests an open meeting. Is there a motion?
Right, second.
Derek?
Yes.
John?
I have.
Yes?
Yes.
Non-public eight thirty, forty-two. I'm, we ended up behind almost exactly what we started, which is not bad in the policy.